Now the new plan is not to do that.
My seat's gonna melt.
I almost touched it when I got him like, okay, I'm saying what you're doing.
Okay, need a motion to approve the agenda.
Nothing else?
Nope.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both fair. Prove the minutes of October seventh.
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both fair. Prove the claims.
Okay, you got claims on seven hundred and five thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and sixty one cents. And then on drainage fifty two thousand, forty nine dollars and forty two cents.
Fifty thousand?
Fifty two.
Fifty two.
We only got seven oh five.
Six oh nine sixty one. I'll second.
Any discussion on them?
Most lot of allocations and purchase of that land at by Runway for the conservation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both fair. General public. Moving on, Ben, you're up.
Morning. Few items for the agenda for today. The first is to approve contracts and bonds for the Thor Box Culver project, the STBG swap. Aaron six oh one. Uh, is that short Culver as you're heading east out of town on two hundred and fiftieth street? We awarded the project, now we're approving the contract and bonds that the contractor PCI in this case, uh, submitted online.
Yeah, make motion to approve the contract and bonds for project. That project.
I'll second. Uh, when, what's the dates on this? They're starting and can start?
So they can start anytime after we've signed these contracts. Late start date is September of next year. So.
Who knows?
So, yeah, uh, late start date is nine eight of twenty twenty five.
I'm guessing they'll check, make sure their boxes done before they dig the hole?
Yep. And they hit forty working days, so, um, about plenty of time, but there's a little bit of asphalt on this job too.
Yeah.
For a patch. They will have at least one subcontractor.
It was the one hundred and forty six thousand, five hundred and forty eight dollars.
Yes.
Right? I was looking at it.
I'll second it. I thought I did. I thought I did.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both fair.
So much around the bond. The second item that I have for the agenda is to approve change order number two for twenty twenty four paving projects. This is the smoothness incentive that we've been waiting for uh, Paul to sign off on. This has been driven by their crew and, uh, confirmed by the DOT with their equipment.
They come in check it also.
Yes. Yep.
What is that thirty thousand, four hundred dollars?
That is thirty thousand, four hundred dollars split up over the three projects.
So just to refresh my memory, that smoothness, they get that a bonus or is this just?
So it's a, we run it as a change order, but yes, it is a, it's a bonus for producing a smooth project and bringing in their diamond grinding mill to mill any irregularities out for a smooth ride.
It's funny, they used to don't expect a smooth ride.
Yeah.
You know, you have to pay bonus for good work, again, just expect good work.
Yeah. Times have definitely changed.
That's only four projects, three, three. It goes eight thousand, six, eight thousand, seven, thousand and eight.
All right, I'll make the motion to prove the change order, change order number two. For the amount of thirty thousand, four hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both fair.
The next item that I have on the agenda is to approve an application to work in the county's right of way for Midland Power. This would be north of the quarry here, northeast of town. They're looking at going underneath one hundred and maybe a street and two hundred and tenth street where they've got overhead line. Uh, Hornbelt will still have an overhead line in the vicinity, but Midland is switching all theirs to underground.
Everything's in order?
We've got an updated copy of their insurance on file. Again, if we can switch as many crossings as we can to underground, it's better for us. Yeah, less chance of us catching up with the box when we're doing regular operations. Yes, yes, we would.
And that holders, they're staying down fourteen days.
Yeah. It's a statement.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both fair.
The next item that I have on the agenda is to approve an application to work in the county's right of way for Paul Anderson. Paul has Paul has the dirt contract that's associated with this trail bridge. Right here off of one sixty nine by the lagoons. And he's purchased the dirt from one of the Edge Boys down in Orange Township. It's a knob or a, it's a hill on, on the south side of the hundred and sixtieth street that they'll cut down, they'll pull all the black dirt off, pull, you know, pull the clay and then put the black dirt back on top. Um, so he'll be right at the edge of the right of way and rather than leaving uh, an eighteen inch wide berm that might be ten feet high, yeah, we're gonna allow him to work in the right of way and shave that down as well within the right of way. Uh, I do need to get an updated copy of his insurance, but everything else is in order.
So they'll take care of any location, the right of way to make sure that.
Reseeding the ditch when he's done, if he did have to get into the ditch.
So if something were to be exposed, then they would then the company would move that down just so I.
Yeah, so two hundred and sixtieth street, I don't believe there's any fiber down there, there might be a phone line. Um, what we've run into in the past is not a lot of those are still active.
Yeah.
Right.
But in the event that they expose a utility while they're conducting their work, it's between them and the utility contractor to get it reburied.
It's probably helping snow on that road too, one.
Should, yeah.
Okay, I'll make that motion to approve those, work in the right of way for Paul Anderson.
I'll second with the stipulation that you get the insurance. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both fair.
Which is nothing different, we ask for insurance for anybody.
That's anybody that's working in the right of way, we, we require a copy of their insurance. And he's got one, it just, the copy that we had on file
is outdated.
Is outdated, I think it expired in August. So. The last item that I've got is a discussion on purchasing new surveying equipment, so the GPS surveying equipment that we've got right now, we purchased the beginning of twenty thirteen. Uh, twelve years old. Outdated, I mean, consider it like a computer, using a twelve year old computer. Yes, it still works, it just takes a little bit longer for the hamsters to get rolling. Uh, for it to get up to speed. Um, the current equipment that we use, the number of satellites that it connects to have been reduced. The most that we typically get is eleven, twelve satellites that we're connecting to. Uh, talking to Transit Works because the company that we purchased the last one from, the guy retired. So there's no Topcon. Our, our normal Topcon dealer has retired, so this is the, the new Topcon dealer who's been around for quite a while. Um, they quoted us upgrading our used uh, Hyper SR and Tesla tablets to Carlson tablet and GPS setup. Um, I have an updated quote after talking to him on Friday that you guys probably don't have in front of you. Um, Carlson is offering an additional twenty five hundred dollars off. Now, anybody purchasing between now and the end of the year, so take twenty five hundred off of that cost, we can upgrade for about fifteen thousand. So uh, the last setup that we purchased, like I said, it was in twenty thirteen and I want to say we spent about twelve, thirteen thousand for it back then.
Oh, wow.
So they're offering us to for trade in. You know, it's been a good machine. Um, either way, we need to do something. Um, we either need to update our purchase license, which is about a thousand dollars every year to use the existing equipment that we have, or we upgrade our equipment and then we don't have that yearly upgrade cost.
So you save a little bit there.
So you, I mean, you'd save a thousand dollars a year by having it. This is not the GPS equipment that I took a picture of yep, last week. So Sandy sent me a picture of, uh, a new motor grater and she's like, is this on your wish list? And I happened to be out surveying and I took a picture, I said, no, this is.
Oh.
It was a, uh, robotic total station. So those survey, those pieces of surveying equipment are really handy when you're doing uh, surveying anywhere where there's timber, where you need to get shots underneath the tree line, uh, close proximity to a bridge that you might lose satellite signal. Um, Hamilton County was kind enough to loan us theirs for the week last week, so I spent a few hours out playing in the woods. So, and that one's fifty thousand for that piece of equipment, so.
But I told him it was nice that they let us borrow it.
Yeah.
So how is the, is it user friendly?
This is supposed to be very user friendly, uh, this new one.
Peter just said that for sixty years.
Yeah. Uh, this does include, uh, going down to Des Moines and being trained on the new
Ask you very much training.
On the new equipment, because it isn't, it, it's not Topcon that we're staying with, it is switching over to a Carlson brand. But I'm told that the transition is pretty seamless.
How many, are you gonna have everybody trained on or just?
Dave and I.
Just Dave, okay, you do.
Just the engineer's office.
Okay.
Okay, well, it sounds like a good idea to me.
I will let them know and we'll get this going.
Okay.
So what did, your total, you said take twenty?
Uh,
Two thirty eight.
Yeah, so I've got fifteen, two thirty eight listed right here, assuming we get the additional items below it, which the, the bipod I'll probably pull off, so there's two hundred bucks. Um, I might switch like the mounting bracket. Minimal, it's gonna be somewhere around fifteen, fifteen five, yeah, so.
Do you make motion, right?
Yeah, I, I, I did, I guess it probably doesn't require a motion, does it?
I just wanted to run it past you before we did it. So.
Yeah, I guess I'm just listening.
Perfect. Um, beyond that, we should be opening up the Blacktop east of Livermore, east of State's Avenue today. Um, so Clyde Mattson called me two weeks ago when he witnessed, uh, he came across the hole in the asphalt. Uh, went up there, cross pipe had separated and lost a bunch of material. And it was right in the middle of the lane. So
Right in the middle of the block.
We dug it up, we ended up replacing the, there was two Culverts side by side, I think there were twenty fours. Uh, or thirties. We replaced the two with a larger forty two inch Culvert, tied it, fabricated it, backfilled with rock and we poured concrete. There's we poured half of it on Wednesday, half of it on Thursday, so I think there was about five of us out there, six of us out there, so.
Was that in that torrential downpour we had?
I was gonna say.
It must have been, yeah, I, I think. Uh, we had grout scouted it at one time, but we didn't, this was an old enough repair that we didn't have the inside tied. Hmm. So my guess is grout scouting had to have been fifteen, twenty years ago. Cause we've been tying everything since like two thousand and ten.
It's amazing how them pipes move.
Just a little rumbling or something.
Yeah, just the vibration from the traffic above it helps separate those, so.
Hmm.
Um, but that should be, be getting opened up today for traffic.
I'll make rumors happy.
Yeah, we've gotten a few phone calls from everybody, you know, wanting to know when the Blacktop was gonna be opening. Obviously, we didn't plan on that happening during harvest, you know.
Well, I'm glad somebody spotted before somebody fell in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just one piece law.
Yeah, we can't it will.
Mm-hmm.
So. Um, but we got that done and taken care of, uh, my Hardy Shop is working on doing a lot of cross pipe repairs, intake repairs. My Humboldt shop is still down on two hundred and seventieth street, I don't know if you guys have been down there to take a look at that since they've been gone.
No.
Uh, looks really good, right now it's completely full of cornstalks from the seven hundred mile an hour wind that we had over the weekend. Um, yeah.
No, we can't do that.
You gotta move equipment into the ditch first.
Yeah.
Uh, no, uh, it, it, it looks good. Um, we've got a little bit of crop that has to get out in the vicinity so that we can knock down the back slope and move the material where it needs to go, like right now we've got spots where we're short of material, so we'll have to load it on a dump truck and bring it to
Haul it there.
Haul it, you know, maybe thousand feet and then dump it again, so. It, it'll move a little bit slower here as we finish up, but.
That is what we're busy with.
Anything else? Everybody got anything for Ben?
Did he come and get that pickup and let it sat in there?
Uh, so Steve Gregory came, dropped off a personal check because it was a personal and not a cashier's check. We, so it's still sitting there.
I thought, did he change his mind or what?
No, he, so he's gonna, he's gonna pick it up today, we took and we dropped it off at the treasurer's office last Monday or Tuesday and we just said we'd wait five business days until it clears and then and then he could take the, the truck and the title and everything, so.
Okay.
He's supposed to be coming today to pick that up.
All right. I thought that second bidder was gonna get a truck.
Right, you know? He would have gotten lucky there.
Yeah.
My kid would have figured out how to wreck that one too.
I know the number three bidder was wondering. Oh, Jim, thrown back?
Oh, bro.
When it was still sitting there.
That's funny.
Yeah, once I could come along in the building over here, get the steel putting on.
Steel is going on on the building, it looks really nice. That's what they've got, what they've got up so far, so. And I need to have Dave re-sign a copy of voucher one, because I misplaced the one that we did two weeks ago and Terry wants assigned one. So. Perfect. All right. Thank you guys very much.
Okay, moving on down. Step to place on file, the recorded quarterly report ending September thirtieth.
Well, you know, we, you guys always get my report.
Yeah.
Yeah, the first, um, pages are all the little buckets of money we collect, which totaled fifty one thousand, five hundred and fifty one dollars and seventy two cents. And then the third page shows what the county gets, which was um, seventeen thousand, six hundred and ninety four fifty five. And that left the remainder thirty three thousand, eight hundred and fifty seven seventeen that went to the various state offices. Uh, the last three pages are just the three months that I zero out at the end of every month and only report to you guys quarterly, so. Nothing, nothing new or, or exciting there, um, just wanted to let you guys know that the beginning of September Iowa Land Records sent you guys all an email to all county and Iowa supervisors about the fee initiation that we talked about briefly a month or so ago and it's proceeding, so uh, it had a couple of minor changes, mostly with Iowa Land Records fees, but, um, hopefully everybody's up, I'm gonna stick that over fly with the legislative system this coming session, so everybody's been working hard on it. If you have any questions about that, let me know, but sorry, pretty.
That should be a good deal for you, cause you guys will get more.
Yeah, and in that, that report that Iowa Land Records did based on twenty three numbers, you know, it's hard to know with pages, but you know, it's twenty to thirty thousand more for county budgets, which it's not huge, but nice.
Hey.
The number that we get, that seventeen, is, is that just a steady number that we haven't, they haven't increased anything in there to?
Hasn't changed since the eighties, so that's, that's why they're going with the fee modernization and um, Iowa Land Records wants more money also for their updating of equipment and more staff. Um, yeah, I think it's interesting that, you know, if you look over the years, just in the ten years I've been here, how e-submission is just every year it's more, you know, we have more in e-submission than we have over the counter in the mail.
Really?
Oh, big time, mm-hmm. And that's, I've probably got, yeah, twenty from Friday, maybe, I don't know. Um, yeah. So at first Iowa Land Records was gonna take five dollars out of page one for them and not charge the submitter, you know, the banks, the attorney's office, the three dollars they had been, but it's been left that they're gonna leave that at three dollars and take, um, three dollars from the first page of what I collect to pay into them. But then they won't charge us our annual fee that we've been paying every year. So, kind of washes out.
Yeah.
And, you know, and every, all the money after page one is all gonna be county money, so that's where the increase is gonna come from, from, um, more than one page documents. So, anyway, thank you guys.
Alright, thank you, Daniel.
I'll make a motion to accept that report.
Yeah, second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both fair. Okay. Auditor's quarterly report.
It's not more simple than a lot less. There's only two, but I get it. So it's just the transfer fees and a flat map of twenty five. A flat book that I should say it was. And that was it. And flat books should be coming probably. I'll make that motion to exception place on file, auditor's condo quarterly report.
I will second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both fair. Okay. Prove amended twenty eighty agreement for environmental health services between counties of Wright and Humboldt. This is sanitary.
Right, sanitary, this is what I talked about a couple of weeks ago, we had to get
Get that grant funding.
So we can get that grant funding and number fourteen basically on the second page, it's Wright County last, as the fiscal agent for Wright slash Humboldt County, sanitary in position that way. But if money does come in, it says Humboldt County, um, sanitary and they can cash the checks, put it in the account without having any auditing issues.
Yeah, I can follow the money better.
Yeah, it's, it's just a, a better paper trail for money.
So our ties to Poki are done.
Correct, yeah.
That was I think it's that month.
First of the year.
June or July.
First of July, end of June.
And then the other thing is number eight, I forgot about that one, the board of supervisors, um, from each county shall designate a management team to oversee the implementation of this agreement. The member shall have the authority to act on behalf of the county, which they were appointed subject to the approval of the board of supervisors, management team will meet annually to assess program um, progress, resolve differences and discuss mutual problems and concerns. The management team shall not require, hold or dispose of the real personal property with used in joint or operative undertaking, so those are the two, eight and fourteen are the.
And I think we discussed that with Rick Rasmussen.
Rasmussen.
At that meeting.
Yes.
Yep.
No, I could have.
We don't want.
Rick and I will be the management team and, uh, Rick and I don't know who.
Oh, it was Rick and Sandy, we met for.
Well, it was Rick, yeah, it was the Rick and Sandy show for a while. Yeah. It's kind of funny, Rick and Sandy.
Should you and I.
Cause there's a.
You want to continue that?
Yeah, I can do that, yeah.
All right.
With the board's approval.
Yeah. Well, I'm. Any complaint from the board?
No, I was just gonna make that motion quick before somebody changes their mind. I'll make a motion to approve the twenty eighty and then also put Rick, our Rick Peterson and Sandy Lonnie on for their management team representatives, our representatives, I guess. Yes.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both fair. Okay, accept the resignation of Luca Folding and appoint Aaron Grant for the planning and zoning board.
I want to thank Luke for his
Service.
Oh, my God. I was gonna say decades of service. And I mean, that's quite an undertaking, it's, it's a lot to be said for a person that's willing to serve that long. But I will accept a But I will accept a regret resignation of Luke Erpolding and appoint Aaron Cran for the planning and zoning board.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, there. And we wanna thank Luke for many, many years of. On the board. Um. Point reclassification commission for DD eighty, do we need to go?
I think we do, cause that should be in the minutes of that.
Yep. I need a motion to go on.
I'll make the motion to go under drainage.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both, there. We are in drainage.
Yeah, alright. That's basically.
Yes, now we're looking for appointments for the reclassification commissioners for DD eighty.
Do we just appoint someone and then call them, or do we call them and see how they're?
Point them and call them and see if they accept.
Well. What do we got, we have Ben, or Ben, we have.
Chris Ward.
Brent. Chris.
Pat.
Pat.
Seems like there's one more, Dave on our mind.
I don't think any of them have anything associated.
That's what I was trying to think, I don't think, you know, this is pretty much all in town. DD eighty does go up that way a ways, but.
I think anyone would be very good.
DD eighty goes up across the trail.
Yeah, it does, but I don't think it should affect any of those members.
Wouldn't affect any of them. Maybe Pat. He's got property up here.
Yeah.
Cool.
So maybe we should stay, maybe go with Chris Wardland and. Check with him and. I know Brent and Dave are really busy, but in this, they'll be done here pretty quick. Way things are going, so.
And this isn't a huge product and project that they're gonna.
Need to.
Should we do it, Brent, please? Try them two first and.
And I just put Dave on as third, as an alternate and see if we get a lot of. Barking will throw another direction. So is that in the form of a motion then?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in.
Aye.
Both, there. Anything else for drainage? Okay, motions go out.
I'll make that motion going.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, there. All right, back in red possession. Down to committee reports.
Um, Tuesday morning I had public safety, and then Wednesday evening I had dog shelter meeting. It was the two I had.
I had, uh. No meetings and I'm gonna be expelled from the mobile food pantry, cause I. Forgot it again, or I wasn't around again. But I have the numbers for it, looks like they had a huge day, they had. Sixty-nine hundred and thirty-five pounds of food, um. Let's see, Humboldt, they had a hundred and thirty-nine families, family members for three hundred and sixty-one. Humboldt Homes was fifty-six and sixty-seven. Livermore was twenty-six and fifty-six. The total families served was two hundred and twenty-one and four hundred and eighty. They had thirty-one volunteers. And the next mobile pantry will be on December twelfth, same. Hours, it starts at four-thirty and goes till they're out, so. Hopefully I can write that and be around, that was all I had.
Okay, the only thing I had was a Zoom meeting from Humboldt County Opioid Alcohol Coalition on Tuesday the eighth. On the bus. That's interesting.
That's it?
That's it, I'm sorry, that's it.
Okay, all that I had was the animal shelter on the ninth. Getting dogs in, getting dogs out, they're still full.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of like revolving door.
Yeah.
Spot opens up, there's two to fill it.
I think all of them that they got from the. Breeder, that they just. You know, would you put the.
Acquired.
Acquired. All of them have been. Taken care of now, so.
Rehomed, just correct.
Rehomed.
Taken care of, that's what's on there, but they.
I would also say that on the radio this morning, they said that Humboldt County has been put in on a burn van, so please, people, don't. As dry as it is, so. Rick said there was a fire yesterday.
It had to be south of town, cause there's a lot of white smoke. Yesterday afternoon at one o'clock, I was sitting eating lunch and, oh, there's white smoke, that's not good, and then it got really big, really fast. Kind of out there, but I got, you know, in that general area of the Blacktop. I haven't driven out to see where it was, but it, it burned for about an hour and then it was gone. It might have been further west then. It's been hard to tell from.
Well.
But it was a ways away.
Wasn't my house.
No.
That's good.
You weren't burning, it wasn't burning.
I may doubt it, but intentionally, there's probably somebody's equipment started a fire.
Awful dry.
Yeah, it is.
And the wind yesterday took care of a lot of stalks in the ditch, right?
Yeah, the conservation has purchased more property from the Natural Heritage Foundation up there in North Huron Lake. So that area has gotten a lot larger for public hunting. It's a nice area up there for people to use. So, but they're still, we have to respect the boundaries, once they get them marked out.
Hey, anything else to come for the board? No, I need a motion.
I'm making motion to a chair.
Second.
All in favor?